Welcome to the Wednesday, January 5th, 2011 Reno City Planning Commission meeting. Can I get everybody to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the meeting. Robert, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Kevin Wieske.
Present.
Jason Wusley.
Here.
Max Haltem.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Patrick Egan. Jim Newberg.
Here.
Dennis Romeo.
Here.
All present accounted for, sir.
Thank you. Approval of minutes of December 2nd, 2010.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kaufman, second from Commissioner Romeo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any...
One abstention?
One abstention, which was Pat Egan, who was not on the commission yet. City Council Liaison Reports. Hearing and seeing none, we will move on. Public comment. Public comment is limited to no more than three minutes on items that do not appear on the agenda and/or items for which no public comment period was afforded. The public may comment upon agenda items by submitting a request to speak form to the clerk at the time of the meeting. Robert, do we have any public...
No, sir. And did you, did I miss City Council Liaison Reports?
Yes, you did.
Or did you skip it?
No, you missed it. That's okay. All right. Nobody has filled out any cards. Is there anybody in the audience this evening who wishes to speak under public comment for anything that's not on our agenda this evening? Hearing and, yes, sir.
I am...
Please come forward to the microphone.
I am on the agenda, but I understand that my agenda item has been pulled. And if that's the case, then I wish to speak now or wait until Item 3 comes up to the forum.
Okay. If, you will have a seat. If your item's been agendized, we will note it in a minute. Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and go to Item Number 6 on our agenda, which is public hearings. This evening, we have a couple of items that have either been postponed or requested for continuance. The one issue this evening, which is Item Number 3, that's one of the items, that's LDC 11-00028 Del Taco. That has been removed from our agenda this evening because it was not properly noticed. So it will be re-noticed and brought before our February 2nd meeting. Okay? So that...
Do I speak?
I will reopen public comment for you if you don't want to speak next month when it's agendized. It's up to you.
On behalf of the city, we would recommend that you allow him to speak, even if you reopen public comment. If you have, in fact, removed from the agenda, then he can speak under public comment, or he can speak under this item if it's still on the agenda. But either way, let him speak for three minutes.
Thank you, Marilyn. In that case, please come up. Let the record show that I will reopen public comment at this time when you're finished. If you would please see Robert and fill out a request to speak form.
I have one.
Perfect. Thank you.
My name is Chris Hoeburg. I live at 3,000 Scottsdale Road. I have, for the last 15 years, been under the onslaught of corporate America, Home Depot, Starbucks, Del Taco, and we live right above them. I don't know if any of you have been to our neighborhood. We've worked very hard to build a nice neighborhood. We built a park. We live above these people. We sat down for months negotiating meetings with public and rented clubhouses and put these conditions on these people to make them understand that their $50 is not worth the quality of our lives. We live right above them. And it's absurd that they pull this in the middle of a holiday season. We get notice the day before Christmas. Everybody's gone. Nobody's in the building because everybody's on vacation. You guys are all on vacation. We're all enjoying our holidays. Why are we subjected to these people trying to amend the conditions that we worked for years to establish and try to pull this backdoor game in the middle of the holidays? It's absurd. Ms. Craig knows it. Claudia Hansen knows it. That's why it's been pulled out the agenda. You guys should not have these meetings right after the holidays. We're all on vacation. How do we protect our interests when we're not home? And I'm glad this got postponed because it's backdoor bullcrap.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to our Item Number 6, public hearings. And with that, we will start with Item Number 1, LDC 11-00029 Circle BL Estates.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Do you want a motion to relist this on next month's agenda or will it just automatically...
When we get to it. Before you come up and introduce yourself, please go ahead and stand there for a second, if you would. Do I have any disclosures or do I have anybody that needs to recuse themselves?
Yeah, Chair, this is Commissioner Haltem. And I spoke to the city attorney, and because I live adjacent to this property, we decided it would be best for me to recuse myself from this particular agenda item. I will return.
Thank you, Commissioner Haltem. Is there anybody else who has any disclosures? All right. We'll give Max a second to step aside. If you would introduce yourself, you have 15 minutes to present your project. You can take all or a portion of it.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Good evening. My name is Robert Bell. I am a principal owner and with my brothers, two brothers, of Circle BL Estates. This is a small project in the northwest, in the McQueen area, and it's a vacant parcel of land, approximately 43 acres, that we have secured a tentative map on a couple times now, the last being 2008. The tentative map was due to expire in November of this year, of last year, 2010. We are simply asking to amend one of the conditions of the tentative map. That condition allowing us to get an additional two years on the tentative map. As you are certainly well aware, Assembly Bill 74, as codified in NRS 278, does now provide for a four-year tentative map. Within that time period, our project fell, and we were asking now just to amend that one condition to allow an additional two years up until November 12th, 2012, excuse me, November 5th, 2012. Project remains the same. It's 24 lots for larger homes, larger property than the rest of the area. I think it has not been a problem in the past. There's been really no opposition to it. In fact, the Community Advisory Board said it was a good project for them. They felt it was a good project. And obviously, I don't think we have any opposition to it here. And I would ask that you amend, that we be allowed to amend that condition number three to allow an additional two years on the tentative map.
Robert, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'd be available for questions if we have any?
Yes.
Thank you. Staff?
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a typical request for an extension based on the change in the state law. It's, I guess, more of a formality, but it needs to be technically done. So staff has no opp, or no concerns with it, and all the existing conditions address any of the concerns that were brought up when it was originally approved. So staff is supporting the request.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
With that, I will open this item for public comment. Robert, do we have any public request to speak forms?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here this evening who has not filled out a card, who would like to speak on this agendized item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions and/or a motion. And before we start with questions, I would like to ask the first question of legal. Marilyn, we have in our staff packet, it says, and the applicant noted that their original expiration date was November 5th, 2010. Is it okay that we proceed with this agendized item even after the expiration date?
Yes, it is. Actually, the tentative map is not expired because of the change in law, and we have looked at that and determined that if a person comes in within a four-year period of the time that they approve their tentative map, then they could ask the planning commission to give them those additional two years that the state legislature provided for. The legislature has not, the state legislature did not expressly state that this was retroactive. But nonetheless, given them the circumstances of how the state passed it and the concerns that they had, and that this law will be sunsetted in 2013, we believe that this is what the legislature intended.
Thank you. With that, I don't have any further questions. I will open it up to Commissioners for questions or a motion. Commissioner Egan?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to, I'm sorry, based on the compliance, I'd like to make the motion to pass. Based on compliance with the applicable tentative considerations and the special use permit findings, I move to approve the amendment to Condition Number 3 for the tentative map subject to the conditions listed in the City of Reno Planning Commission Decision Letter dated November 6, 2008 for Case Number LDC 09-00014 Circle BL Estates, and is amended subject to the above modifications and additions, and any modifications and additions adopted by the planning commission or upon appeal by the city council to the conditions of approval during their respective public hearings. I can make the finding.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, it would be my pleasure to second the first motion made by Commissioner Egan. I can make the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Haltem, your presence is requested. Way to jump in there, Commissioner Egan, and get your feet wet. That was good. All right. Next on our agenda is Item Number 2, LDC 10-00051 Bella Vista Ranch. At this time, we would like to open public hearing on this agenda item and ask if there is any request to speak forms regarding this. We do have a request to continue this agenda item to the Feb, to the February 2nd meeting, which is next, our next meeting, next month. And I, after Kim Rhoadmeier comes up, I will entertain a motion from my Commissioners to, for a continuance on this item. So Kim, are you available? Would you...
Mr. Chairman, I can come back at the next meeting.
Would you mind coming up to the microphone, no one's stating that, please, except for the record?
For the record, Kim Rhoadmeier, I can come back to the February meeting.
Thank you very much. With that, I will entertain a motion for a continuance. Commissioner Kaufman?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC 10-00051, I move to postpone this and put it on the agenda for February 2nd.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Haltem, I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Haltem. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will see you back here next month, February 2nd. Thank you. Item Number 3 on our agenda has been pulled. That is due to a noticing issue. That will be brought back and put on our agenda next month at the February 2nd meeting also. Agenda item Number 4 is next on up, that is, LDC 11-00026 Demone Ranch, Phase 5 Villages 1 and 2, Units 2, 3, and 4. The applicant's representatives will please introduce themselves. You have 15 minutes.
Yes, for the record, Susan Dorr Manhard Consulting, representing LP Demone LLC. Today, we are here to request a tentative map for 368 units in the Demone Ranch Phase 5 area. It's in the general vicinity of Carrot Drive here and Veterans Parkway. This is actually part of a tentative map that was approved in 2006 for 575 units. In 2007, 207 units were recorded as a final map, which you see here in the white. Remaining after that were the 368 lots that are before you today. Basically, we're in front of you for two reasons today. One, because we'd like to redo the map to take advantage of AB 74 and wait for the market to correct a little bit more. And two, because Village 1, which is actually here to the north of Carrot Drive, we wanted to do a little bit of a redesign on that. Before, we had cluster lots, and it was just not a land plan that was really well-received. So we decided we would change it to single-family. It's a much better design. So that's what we're looking at there. The lots in Village 2, to the south, in these two yellow sections here, are exactly the same as they were on the original tentative map. As a matter of fact, we have approved improvement plans in that area. Nothing will be changing. Overall, we will still have 575 units. Nothing's changing there. We're not increasing anything, and that really is it. So I'm available for questions if you have them.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Staff?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. I think the applicant summed it up very well. This is basically a redo of, or it is a redo of, the original tentative map. No increase in number of lots. It's consistent with the Demone Ranch PUD, and staff is supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. With that, I will open public comment. Robert, do we have any request to speak forms?
No, sir, I do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience this evening that would like to speak on this agendized item that has not filled out a request to speak form? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the planning commission for questions, discussion, motion.
Chair Wieske?
Commissioner Newberg?
I would like to make a motion based upon compliance with applicable findings. I move to approve the tentative map subject to conditions for LDC 11-00026. I can make the findings?
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wusley?
I can too make the findings, and I second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion, and I have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Item Number 5, LDC 11-00023 Royal Liquor &amp; Smoke. If the applicant will please come up. And before introducing himself, let me ask for any disclosures from planning commissioners. Commissioner Newberg?
Chair Wieske, I have had a personal phone conversation with the applicant's representative.
Okay. Commissioner Wieske, I too have had a phone call and discussion with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Romeo, I've had a phone call and an email, and I received a email letter, I guess, today regarding this issue.
Okay. Any others? Commissioner Wusley?
I have also received emails regarding this.
Okay. Any others? Nope? Okay, thank you. Those are our disclosures. Applicant's representative, please introduce himself and begin.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group, here on behalf of Royal Liquors, Inc. Also with me are Amon and Savinder Singh, the store owners. This is somewhat of a unique special use permit that it actually came about through a code enforcement action. Right now, Royal Liquor &amp; Smoke is approved as a specialty liquor store, which allows them to sell liquor and tobacco products. As the business has evolved, they found that they wanted to add some basic grocery items, sundries, coffee, and ATM machine, more like a convenience store. However, the way the code is written, because they do not have 51% or greater of their floor space dedicated to liquor, a special use permit is required. So we're not asking for 24-hour use or anything like that. It's just basically to diversify what's being offered and go from more of a liquor store to a neighborhood market type thing. It was brought to our attention, too, that there were some concerns within the neighborhood regarding some of the products that were sold there, specifically water pipes, you know, materials that could be considered drug paraphernalia. That's all been removed from the inventory voluntarily. In fact, I can tell you, the owners are, live in that neighborhood, and soon as they found out there were concerns, it was gone that day. Same with the adult materials. There were originally some sales of adult magazines, videos. Those have been removed from the store's inventory. So we really, really want to be part of the neighborhood. One thing that I would like to clarify, the staff report notes that this is a 6,200-square-foot building. The building itself is 6,200 square feet. However, the tenant space is occupied by Royal Liquor &amp; Smoke, is just under 2,800 square feet. So we aren't occupying the entire building, just Suite 1 of that building. Like I said, the owners live in the neighborhood. We see this as evolving into more of like a neighborhood-type market. The NAB com, or meeting for December was canceled, and I'm going to put this up. However, we did send packets out to all the NAB members, and unfortunately, I guess those did not make it into the staff report, but we received very positive comments back from the NAB. I've highlighted two here, and it says, "Making the business a convenience store should enhance its presence in the neighborhood." That was from Donna on the NAB. And then Ellen Jacobson, who's also a NAB member, said, "It's my opinion that this application for change of use will actually enhance the use for the neighborhood and decrease the potential issues associated with only selling liquor." And then I can provide this, another NAB member actually responded to their email saying that he concurred. So we did get, get out to the NAB, and like I say, there's been some significant changes made within the store already, and we're not asking for any sort of 24-hour use. It's an existing business, and we're here to answer any questions. The owners are here to answer any questions you might have as well.
Thank you, Mike. If you wouldn't mind, do you have a copy of that that you could leave with Robert, please?
Yeah, I can leave this. I'll give it to the clerk.
Thank you. Staff?
Good evening, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. I think Mr. Raely summarized this very well. I think that the main odd issue with this one is that it's a grandfathered liquor store. We have since recently changed the code so that liquor stores are considered convenience stores, and those would all require special use permits under the current code. They came in before that code amendment came in, so a liquor store was considered just general retail, and it was allowed just by business, by business license. Since then, we've amended it, so if this were to be a new business coming in, it would require a special use permit to establish. Currently, they are allowed to operate as a liquor store, solely just a liquor store. This, they're asking to bring in general grocery items. Staff considers that bringing it closer into conformance in one way, more of what we want, not just a general, just a standalone liquor store, so bringing in general commercial grocery items would be a better mix for that neighborhood, for that area. So staff is supporting this, and staff can make the findings.
Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
Okay. With that, I will open the public comment portion of this. I have several requests to speak forms. We will start with Jean Peterson. And Jean, you'll get, everybody will have three minutes, okay? And after Jean will be Erin Ricchio. Go ahead. Jean, you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Jean Peterson. I do indeed live in the area of this liquor store. I've been in that area for 12 years. I never thought I'd have to be defending where I live as a result of what has moved in. The staff report, page 2, the background portion, says, "The report found in the center, restaurants, a fitness center, medical offices, and professional offices, also a wine store. All of these have very minimal signage. There is no way this liquor store slash convenience store is compatible with this center. The background would indicate that because of popular demand, the owner decided to install grocery items, a coffee machine, an ATM machine, sodas, and so forth, all without the proper permitting. In my opinion, those items are fine. However, a hard liquor store just blocks from three grade schools and right next door to a preschool, also is a little further from a high school, really pushed the envelope as far as their permitting is concerned. In my opinion, the liquor store should never have been permitted in the first place." Page 3, the analysis of the staff report. "Since the store is less than 5,000 square feet, may we assume that someday we could see gas sales in it as an accessory to the convenience store if permitted? Signage. Every day, I must pass that visual blight and total eyesore of signage on three sides of this building. Very often, new temporary sign that may become a permanent one, or another large banner has been added to the exterior of the building. Windows can barely be seen as they are covered with liquor and neon signs. I don't really believe the Committee for Urban Design slash Special Use Permit could possibly consider the signage appropriate. What's next? As to the banners, will there be more and more and more as they have, as we have balloon races, rodeos, air races, more banners? This owner has been given a permit for a specialty liquor store, and no doubt, he is coming to you now for a bigger piece of the pie, which he envisioned from the very beginning. Yes, at some point, he may even want the gas sales permit as well. It is time to hold this owner's feet to the fire and say no, not this time, or ever. Thank you very much for your time and consideration."
Thank you. Next, Erin. After Erin will be Greg Martin.
Erin Ricchio, Representative of the Ribeiro Companies, along with, I have listed all the LLCs that I represent, which are independent owners within the complex. Before my time starts, I'd like to correct the gentleman. The building is actually 19,900 square feet, not 6,188. The parcel is 6,188. I sent this picture in earlier today. Before we even get into all the reasons that were opposed to this convenience store, we don't believe that proper notification, proper public notification protocol was followed. The postcards were sent out on 12/21. Many of my owners were out of town. Many neighborhoods... Many neighborhood people never received any notification at all. And if you look at the photograph, that is a piece of plywood that should have notification, public notification on bright colored paper of what the meeting is going to be. That sign was up for a total of three hours in front of the store. The store owners knew it was gone. There were no other signs, not on Robb Drive, Stone Valley. None of the other tenants, unless you were an owner, they weren't notified. The tenants had no idea. I tried to rally as many people as I could get to come this evening, but with such short notification right after the holidays. Many people were unavailable to come. To say they wanted to bring in grocery items is ludicrous. There are adult DVDs. There are paraphernalia. They can call it whatever they want. There are pot-smoking pipes. There are switchblades. There are signs all around the store promoting children to come into the store. There's been vomit, broken bottles. Many children, I have pictures of children camped out in front of the liquor store. The signage is absolutely atrocious, including a sign saying, "Come in for a free drink." It's 200 yards from two preschools. It's directly adjacent to a pediatrician office. It's directly adjacent to an orthodontist office. As the developer, we laid CCNRs out to make sure that there would not be a use like this within our development. We are currently in a lawsuit with the tenant because they have broken many of the regulations in the CCNRs. I understand you can't help me enforce that, but as an information piece, their signage is completely unallowed within the CCNRs, and the sale of the amount of wine that they have is not allowed. I'm going to go ahead and put, this is a picture of some children sitting out in front on their bikes. This is a picture of Colin Preschool that is less than 200 yards away from the store. This is a nice banner that says, "Come in for a free drink." This is no further than a quarter of a mile from Billingshurst Middle School. I'd like to go ahead and put up the picture of their signage.
Erin, can I ask you to wrap it up, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
That's Summit Pediatrics. That's our general signage. This would be the liquor store signage.
Can you turn that other way so we can see it? Thank you.
And here's another picture. Every single day, new banners, new signs, "Come in, have a drink, get wasted." It's totally inappropriate.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we ask for those to be submitted for the record, please?
Yes. Would you please turn all those over to Robert for the record, please?
Yes.
Or copies, whichever. Thank you. Greg Martin, please, next. After Greg will be Andrew Boren.
Good evening. Greg Martin, I'm a tenant in the complex. I run the Edward Jones office in the complex, and I'm also the President of the Northwest Reno Small Business Association, representing over 40 business owners, the majority of whom are in the complex or near the complex. I speak for the group. We oppose the approval of the special use permit. I oppose the approval of the special use permit. And during the construction of the facility, I called the zoning department, as well as other offices through Reno Direct, and brought to the attention that it was being designed as a convenience store prior to even the first bottle of liquor showing up in that facility. I will yield most of the additional time, if she needs it, to the Robero Corporation and Erin, but if she needs extra time, just contact me if you need anything.
Thank you. And Robert, for the record, there's two minutes and four seconds, five seconds, whichever. Erin, would you like to come back up at this time and take that two minutes? Thank you. Would you mind resetting the clock to 2:05? Feel like a basketball referee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Please continue.
I would say that if you do decide to approve this, again, we're completely opposed to it, but the fact that they decided to remove the pipes the day before we came here does not give anybody within the complex any assurance that those pipes will stay gone. The proposed use is not complementary to the environment. It's one thing, if you go into a Ben's Liquor Store, the liquor is packaged, it's on the walls, the signage is compliant with the neighborhood. You're not luring kids in to the liquor store. It's for adults. So, I think we really need to have a defining line here. Do they want to sell hot dogs and sodas, or do they want to sell liquor? They need to choose one or the other, and they need to clean up their signage. They're out of city code with their signage. Their temporary signage has been up well over the allotted time. I have tenants who are trying to promote buying stocks, and they had to take their sign down, but you can hang a banner that says, "Come drink for free," that's been up now for six months. They basically went in, decided they were going to build out what they wanted to build out. I also called and said, "This is a convenience store." I looked at the plans. I said, "This is a convenience store." I have a copy of their application, which I'll also leave here, and the application actually says they want to sell groceries and liquor, and it was approved. That's a convenience store. That's not a liquor store. So, we have a problem from day one. They have chosen to do what they want and try and get forgiveness later through signage, through the design on the store. From day one, they knew what they were going to do. They finally got cited. They were given 60 days to get compliant. They're still not compliant. I mean, I understand they're in for an SGP. It doesn't mean they should be operating today as a convenience store, which they are. They have taken the road of, "We'll do what we want, and we'll get permission for it later," and that's exactly what's happening. So, if nothing else, if we can get this thing postponed, so I can get the rest of the neighborhood here and the rest of the owners from the complex, I would appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Next up is Andrew Boren. Andrew, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Andrew Boren. I'd like to speak against the special use permit. I don't do this much. So, I'm an optometrist. My practice is Reno Family Eye Care. It's in the, one of the two buildings closest to Royal Discount Liquor. I also own that portion of the building. I also live about 750 feet away from there. I have children that go to public schools here. And my understanding, when I moved my practice from the renowned medical area to where it was, was that it would have greater value because it was a professional area. I have a pediatrician next to me, an orthodontist, a pediatric dentist, a general dentist. I have a very, Reno Family Eye Care is a very child-centered practice, and that adds a lot of value. My understanding was with the convenience store that that also included liquor stores. It does seem that they have gotten around, by using the letter of the law, gotten around the spirit of the law and what the intent of that is. "It decreases the value of my property. It decreases the value of my practice, and it's not as good a place for us to live." It certainly is a problem, people consuming alcohol in the area. I've recently, we've had people come up in front of my practice, smoke marijuana in their cars, heckle my staff members. I do have a police report on an incident like that, where they wrote them up, and there's a reference number for that. Those things didn't happen previously. Certainly, there's broken glass that's been cleaned up lately that is around the dumpsters from liquor bottles. It does seem really wrong to be so near a preschool. I mean, that's the adjacent property, is the preschool, the daycare. Westergaard Elementary hasn't been mentioned. That is right at about 1,000 feet away from there. I really, it doesn't make sense. The convenience store sounds better, but really, with all the children there, from the high school, the middle school, the consumption of beverages there, the consumption of food, it's against the spirit of the law. I think it decreases the value of what my understanding was when I got into this, and I think it's a really, I think that they have not operated in good faith with the permit they've gotten, which was really a backdoor thing. They wanted to start off with a convenience store. They figured they could get around the law with this, is my understanding, with the liquor store permit, but they haven't operated in good faith with that, so I would hope that they are not extended the extra permissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. That's all the request-to-speak forms I have at this time. Is there anybody else here in the audience who wishes to speak, who has not filled out a form? Yes, ma'am. If you'd come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and then fill out a card over here to my right, your left.
Don't you fill out the card before?
No. You can fill it out after you have your three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Amande Palsa, and I'm one of the owners, and I would like to just answer some of the questions as far as the banner on the side of the store that says, "Free Drink." Free Drink was a Coke. That was just an advertisement while we opened, and the banner was approved by Robero, even though they say it wasn't. And as far as for the pipes, and the reason we're trying to convert this into convenience store, because we have kids coming into the store, and we have kids on our own, so we know that we need to get rid of these things. And if we have to operate as a liquor store, then we're forced to keep 51% liquor. We're forced to have all the tobacco product, and we actually want to get rid of it. So, that's the main reason why we want to convert it into convenience store, because even with liquor store, kids still come in. And if you convert it to a convenience store, it'll be a much better environment, because kids are still going to come in. So, we want to make sure, we really want to get rid of all those things that are not good for children, basically. And as far as all the signs, basically, everything's been approved that we have put up, and the pipes, adult DVDs have all been removed, and that's why we are working with the neighborhood, trying to get rid of those things, because after we moved in, we realized that a lot of kids come into our store. So, we want to make it kids-friendly and get rid of a lot of things, and that's the reason why we wanted to make it into a convenience store. And I really would be grateful if you guys could help us with that, because we have children, and we don't want our children around that kind of environment, and that's what we're trying to change in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would, over here, step over to this side and fill that card out with Robert. Thank you. Is there anyone else who?
Can I read this, Representative of the landlord?
No. Not at this time, because you've had your three minutes. Thank you. I have a lady in the back row. If you'd like to come forward, please. Introduce yourself, and then also fill out a card when you're finished.
I apologize. I didn't realize I would be speaking tonight. I came as a boy scout to observe. I actually am a parent with a child at Colin Preschool and a son at Billingshurst Middle School, and I really think if you let the community know about this and the situation with a liquor store that's expanding to sell things to young people, that most parents will not feel that that's compatible, that they will want their kids out of the liquor store permanently. And I do know that there are other convenience places nearby that the children can go to that don't have to necessarily sell only alcoholic beverages. I also am a middle school science teacher at O'Brien Middle School, and I work with middle school students every day, and I would really caution you about putting temptation in front of our young kids, because I work with those kids, and you don't want us smoking and drinking. Apologize for my emotions. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you.
Denise Ebenol. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. If you'd fill out a card, please. Sir, you had raised your hand. You would like three minutes, please.
My name is Dennis Yoder. I'm a property owner there, and I have a tenant, a wonderful tenant, a professional. And I purchased that property while it was still dirt, in other words, knowing it was a professional site for medical use and that type of thing. I didn't want to invest in a piece of property where there was going to be a speedy mart, a 7-Eleven, a quickie stop. We all know that those drive a lot of traffic, and it's a different kind of traffic, and although I'm not at the site all the time, my tenant talks to me about it, and I don't want to end up having a problem in that regard, because the CCNRs in place when we all bought there clearly did not allow this type of usage. And the notice, I mean, I got the notice around Christmas time. I haven't had a chance to rally or to contact any of the other owners, but I know that with proper notice, we could probably fill this room with the owners of that property, and I would certainly hope that we don't grant, how am I going to say this? You know, forgiveness is much easier than permission, and I heard that earlier tonight, and we all know that's true as well. So, thank you for your consideration to, at the minimum, delay any decision that you're going to make today, so that we can bring you more ammunition. And if I have additional time, if any of the other people want to make a comment, I'll surrender that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Robert, if you would hold that clock. Erin, you may be and probably will be asked to come forward by commissioners for questions and answers. Do you think at that time that would be most appropriate in my meeting? Would you wait for that, please? Thank you. Is there anyone else under public comment who would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment at this time, and I will bring it back to the commission for questions of staff, the applicant, or anybody who has spoken. Commissioner Romeo, I'm going to start with you this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Wieske. Erin, could you step back up to the podium? I have a few questions for you.
No, let me grab my notebook.
What is your official capacity in that shopping center? Are you the landlord?
I'm the Vice President of Sales and Leasing and the Director of Property Management. So, I manage the association. I manage the manager of the association. I'm not actually here on behalf of the association tonight. I did want to throw out there that the association and one of the tenants in the property is involved in a lawsuit with the tenant based on not following the CCNRs, along with the owner of the property. But what my capacity this evening, what I do for the company is, when it's dirt, I sold actually to all the gentlemen here this evening.
Including the applicant? Do they also own?
No, they don't own their property. That was sold to an investment group. That investment group was warned before moving this tenant in that they were in violation of the CCNRs. They chose to do it anyway. The investment group, along with the party, had real estate representatives who were also warned that they were in violation of the CCNRs. That representative withdrew from the transaction three-quarters of the way through the transaction, knowing that it was an inappropriate transaction for the center.
And the intent of that business was an upscale liquor sales? Is that what I'm?
Your mic's not on, buddy.
Huh?
Your mic's not on. It is on, it's just not.
The intention of that space was, what, a upscale wine and spirits?
The intention of this space, they're all built out as shell spaces. I have a map here, actually.
Well, I don't, I've heard it's a professional site, and I'm, in my mind, I'm trying to wrap around what a liquor sales, even upscale, wine and spirits would fit in a professional office space. That's really a yes or a no?
Well, here's, it is and it isn't. Within the zoning, the neighborhood commercial zoning, you are allowed to have a packaged liquor store. So, but you are not allowed to have a convenience store without a special use permit.
I understand, I probably understand that better than you do.
I'm sure you do. So, it wasn't, it would not have been our choice. As a landlord, we chose not to lease to anybody who wanted to represent a liquor store. We can't stop the owners who are there from doing that, but we do have CCNRs in place to prohibit.
So, it wasn't directly the center. It was the owner of that space renting to the owners or the operators of the store?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to, in my mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sure you'll have other questions. Marilyn?
Hi.
Noticing, we saw a blank piece of plywood up there, that apparently the sign was only up for three hours. Does this comply with the letter or the spirit of the notification process for these type of special use permits?
The city requires the applicant to place the notice. Neither the city nor the applicant can guarantee that that notice will stay in place, because they are often removed by people who, for whatever reason, decide to take the notice down. So, if it is, if it is attached inappropriate to the law, then at that point, that is compliance with the law.
And the requirements, and the notifications are mailed out within 750 feet?
I believe that's what the notification is, yes.
Is that right, Colin? Mike, I'm, yeah, I'm. Mike, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, guys. I just want to try to get through this. All right, Mike, notification. You're the man. How was it done?
I can tell you that I put those signs up personally. I put them up. As you know, we had a winter storm come through. Over New Year's, I went out, and one sign was down when I went out, and I actually reposted it a second time. I have not been out there since the end of, well, I think I went out on, I think, I believe it was last, it was New Year's Eve, the last time I was out there. It was the last Friday. And that's when I put up another sign. So I, you know, I...
The green sign on the...
On the board, yeah. I replaced the one that came down during the storm.
Okay.
And we have had a storm since then. So, you know, we try to use as many staples as possible to hold those things on, but when the wind gets kicking, you know, sometimes it's beyond our control.
All right, thanks, Mike. Claudia? I'm going to get everybody today. This business is already licensed to be there as a packaged liquor store.
That's correct.
So if we do nothing today, it continues to operate in place as a packaged liquor store?
That's correct.
Is that, all right, so I've got that part of it correct?
Yes.
So with a special use permit, does that create a more restrictive use in that store or a less restrictive use? Is it more enforceable from the city on a revocation of a special use permit than a simple code enforcement violation?
The convenience store portion of it would be arguably revocable. They are allowed to have that liquor store, though. That was allowed in by code.
So there's nothing we're going to do today is going to close that store? The best we would, the best we would do today would be special use permit conditioning it to a more, a less onerous use in that center, is that...
That would be your option.
That would be our option.
I'm not going to say whether it's better or worse.
Well, I'm trying to, trying to work...
But that would, that would be an option, would be to condition it, whether it's signage, lighting, anything you can do that, to make that fit into the neighborhood, you can consider those things as well. Or the applicant may be able to offer anything up on that.
And for convenience stores, distances to schools, are there requirements? I know there are 7-Elevens in different stores similar to that around high schools and grade schools all over town. Is there a distance separation between a convenience store and a school?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. Commissioner Kaufman?
Cheryl, or this might be Marilyn. We've heard that this violates a CCNR versus a special use permit. I mean, do we, obviously, we don't have those CCNRs, and we're only going on the city's guidelines.
The planning commission does not enforce CCNRs.
I have another question. I just don't know how to phrase it here, so give me a minute.
All right. Commissioner Newberg? I'll come back to you, Commissioner Kaufman.
Claudia, what is the distance that is supposed to be between a liquor store and a school? Grade school, high school, middle school?
I'll have to check the code to see what that spacing is, but I have the code. I can look that up.
Okay, if you could. And what about the signage? Wraparound banners, three-sided signs? What's the code on that?
I have some photos here. Robert, can you zoom in on some of those, please? Thank you. So for example, and I was trying to find out from the applicant if any of these have...
Robert, can you dim the lights for us a little bit, please?
If any of these have permits or not, I don't think that they do. Even if they're a temporary banner, they would still need the banner permit. And, well, there's a certain exemption on size. But for the most part, the banners would not be allowed. The sandwich boards out here, there's one on ice cream and one about cigarettes or something, the sandwich boards are not allowed. The banners would not be allowed unless they fall into the qualification of a temporary banner for a grand opening or special event, something like that. So all those would have to be removed. As far as the signs in the windows, the neon in the windows that you see in any grocery store, convenience store, we do not regulate those, the signage that are placed in the windows.
Okay. Now, as far as you know, this property is not, it's a corner property, correct?
It is.
And so there's only two sides that are available or visible?
There's three. This one is visible from the street, and then...
From both sides, from all three sides?
And then, I only have two shown here, sorry. This is from the parking lot area, and then there will be the drive aisle as well.
Okay.
Erin, do you have that photo, that, from that angle?
Robert has it.
That would be the one from the drive aisle.
That's the front.
That's the side.
That's the side.
Oh, that's Mayan, I'm sorry. You're right.
That's Mayan.
That's Mayan. That's the main entrance.
That's the main entrance.
Let me see if I can find a side one. That should be the side one.
And that's the side. So the now open...
The correct side, right?
That'd be the back. So the now open and those other banners are not within code, correct?
Correct.
So Reno Direct needs to be called on those, or, and if they are called, how many times before they get fined or pulled or whatever?
That's a code enforcement issue.
Code enforcement, totally right.
And there's a regular schedule of how many, what the fines are at certain intervals.
Okay. Would code enforcement also be the people, Reno, I believe, has laws against selling crack pipes or things like that, don't they?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Reno has laws against selling crack pipes. I think the federal government does. Or pot pipes.
We do not address...
That's probably a question for Marilyn.
Marilyn?
There is an officer present in the audience, if you would like to have Reno Police come forward and explain their drug enforcement program.
Yeah, let's have that. He's a plainclothes guy.
Thank you. If you would introduce yourself, officer?
Sure. Yes, please. My name's Sergeant MacVenzon. I'm a sergeant with the Reno Police Department, currently assigned to the street enforcement team, the team used for narcotics and vice investigations. There is currently a law that regulates the sales of drug paraphernalia. However, I would tell you that it's easily circumvented as the items that are being sold in many stores. And I haven't been in this store, so I couldn't tell you what's for sale here or not. The items being sold are not sold for the purposes of drug use, being sold as novelty items or for tobacco use only, and usually posted that way. Okay. So that ties our hands as far as enforcing a law of sales of drug paraphernalia.
Then what about cigarette papers?
Cigarette papers are not drug paraphernalia.
Okay.
Unless they're used...
For, unless they have the dope in them or something, okay.
For roll marijuana, let's say.
All righty. That answers that question.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Sergeant.
You're welcome.
They should call drug enforcement if they see this going on. Because, you know, I'm kind of concerned. They're talking about people smoking marijuana out in the parking lot. And I'm not sure that has to do with a liquor store or anything like that, but, you know...
Right. You know, and it's commonplace in our area for that to occur. Like I said, though, to enforce the laws would be difficult for us if they're not sold with the intent to use, to ingest drugs.
Now, what about knives?
Knives are fine to sell. Switchblade knives are not. Spring-operated knives are not.
All righty. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I have one more question for the applicant, or for the owner. Do they have knives in there that they're selling?
I know, I've been in there. They have, there's pocket knives, there's absolutely no switchblades whatsoever, I can assure you that.
Or switch combs or something like that, but not a switchblade?
Not even that. It's, they're, you know, like, pocket knives, utility knives, that sort of thing.
All righty. That's what I needed to know. And did we find out what the distance has to be for the...
If I can, if I can just add just one other thing on the signs? Commissioner's saying no, but if you have any questions...
No, thank you.
I'm not asking about that one.
When you're asked, you can answer, Mike. Thank you.
We double-checked on that, and there is no spacing requirement.
There is no spacing requirement. So it could be, like, right next to the school, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Wusley?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Marilyn. Two questions, actually. One being the notification during the holidays, even though it's notifying, say, 12/21, I mean, it's still legal to notify residents at that time, even though there may be a chance that they're away?
That is correct. It is legal to do that. It is within your good judgment as to whether you want to continue this.
Okay, thank you. And then the next question would be, if there is litigation going on right now for, internally with the property, their signage, it's dealing with their CCNRs. And we went on to condition something that would control things like signage or something like that, would it be appropriate at this time to do that? Or should this litigation bother us whatsoever with?
No, you should act independent of it in accordance with the zoning laws.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Kaufman, are you ready?
I'm ready. Cheryl, does parking change at all with the, I mean, sorry?
That's why I didn't stand up.
With, does parking change at all with the convenience store designation versus...
It is a slightly different rate. We'll get, convenience store versus retail.
Robert, while we're waiting, can, would you mind turning our microphones up a little bit? We're having a hard time hearing each other up here. Thank you.
And your hearing's working well today? Well, I guess it's not.
No, I'm sorry. General retail is the same for, convenience store would fall under that for parking. It's the same.
I guess this is for the applicant. Why didn't this go before a NAB?
The, we were scheduled for the NAB. We submitted our agenda reservation form. The NAB canceled their meeting for December. I don't know if they had a lack of quorum or why they canceled that meeting, but we were informed that the meeting was canceled. But we did send out all the information to the NAB members. I'm not quite sure why that, why their comments didn't make it to the staff report, but I did provide them to the clerk. Because they copped the, Barb DiCiano, the NAB quarter, the NAB coordinator copied me when she forwarded the, forwarded the comments to Cheryl.
Oh, my question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Halton?
Just one quick clarification. Where was the...
To who? Who are you going to...
I think, I think it's going towards Erin, who has the answer for this. Was, where was the public notification sign? Was it on Mayan or Ambassador or on the interior parking lot? Or were there multiple signs? Maybe that's a question for Mike to follow up on.
Well, I drive the property every single day. I live up there. Additionally, I manage the park and do leasing there. I saw one sign. It was right in front of the liquor store on Ambassador, and it was up for a couple of hours. I want to go back. He said there's not switchblades in there. I have a photograph in my phone of their case with knives this long in the case, not pocket knives. I'll be happy to email them to you, and they're dated and marked.
Thank you, Erin. No further questions? Okay. Claudia?
One last question, please. This business appears to have a lot of signage area in the photographs that we've seen. Is that because it is on a corner and it, by ordinance, is allowed signage? Does it meet or exceed square footage for signage for the square foot of the building or the tenant's space? Can you address the signage a little bit more, please?
I can. The permanent signs, so the ones mounted externally to the walls, those, that meets code. As I said earlier, the signs within the windows are not regulated. The sandwich boards in the front are not allowed, so those would need to be removed. But that is something you could, the applicant could discuss on signage to reduce those, or you may want to discuss that with him. I also have...
But based on our ordinances, the signs, the square footage of those signs meets our code?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're allowed side signage and back signage and front signage because they are on a corner?
Correct. It would be based on the frontage in those areas, yeah.
Okay.
And then, just to go back to the previous question, I think by Commissioner Newberg, this is where the required posting signs went. So one on the side street and one out on Mayan. So Ambassador, Ambassador and Mayan were the two posting notices.
Commissioner Newberg?
I'm thinking that Dennis and I were both on the commission when this was initially approved.
And your point is?
I just wanted to bring that to your attention there, Mr. Chairman Wieske.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? The applicant, anybody from the public staff? With that, I will close questions and bring it back to commission for discussion. Commissioner Romeo, please.
Well, I'll get it started, and I'm still open here. So I'm really torn. A special use permit gives us more enforcement action than what's currently there. I generally would be in favor of the conversion from a packaged liquor store to a convenience store and neighborhood commercial. However, the facts in this case, and if you look at the findings for a special use permit, and strictly going down the findings for a special use permit, taking, taking the feelings out and being objective about it, I'm having a problem with condition, with finding A, it's compatible with existing land uses and development in a business, professional development. Finding F, the project does not create adverse environmental impacts such as smoke, noise, glare, dust, vibration, fumes, pollution, or odor, which will be detrimental to or constitute a nuisance to area properties. I think broken glass in the parking lot, arrest citations for smoking illegal substances and vomit on a sidewalk would create, in my opinion anyway, something less than desirable for the area properties. And finding G, which is project signage is in character with project architecture, and I'm using that term, "architecture," and is compatible with or complementary to surrounding uses. I think the pictures that we've seen clearly show that it is not, that it is not complementary to surrounding uses. Again, we're looking at a professional site. Now, having said that I'm having a problem with those three findings, I wish that some of my fellow commissioners would please convince me, because I do believe that we can tighten this down much tighter with a special use permit than allowing a packaged liquor store to stay in existence that's clearly not wanted in the neighborhood. I don't, I don't know if the neighbors, and pardon me if I, if this comes out wrong, but you might be cutting off your nose to spite your face. A special use permit gives us more ability to control and to regulate than what's already there. You're not going to shut them down. They're already an existing business. But going back to my basic findings, I cannot make three of the findings. So at this point, at this moment, I would not be in favor of granting the special use permit based solely on the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. Commissioner Halton?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Halton? My comments, I think, mirror Commissioner Romeo's quite similarly. I, too, had clearly indicated in my findings notes here that I was unable to make findings A, F, and G, which were the three same that Mr. Commissioner Romeo had identified. I live in the area as well. My, one of my two daughters attends the Colin Preschool, so I frequent Mayan and Ambassador daily. I've also frequented several of the businesses in the Roberto development in that area. I have to admit that I've driven that street and driven by that business every day for the last three weeks, because I've been in town. And I never noticed a sign. If it hadn't been for my commission packet and my, you know, being familiar with the agenda, I wasn't aware that that business was on the schedule for the planning commission. I'd like to think that I am more likely to notice a large green sign than anybody here in town. I'd like to think that I am more likely to notice a large green sign than anybody here in town because of the nature of our job. You know, I do notice those signs and where they're placed and posted. So I do believe that we have a noticing problem on here between the holidays and the signs being blown down or removed with the weather and whatever the reasons were. I would support a continuation to renotice this. I would also, like Commissioner Romeo said, if we could have a clearly set, an articulated set of conditions to address the neighborhood concerns, I would be happy to consider a special use permit in the future. But I, I cannot make findings A, F, or G, and I would support denial of the special use permit.
Commissioner Newberg?
Thank you, Chair Wieske. Broken glass around, in a, in a parking lot. People smoking dope in a car. Is it because of the liquor store? I don't know. It's like saying that a casino brings prostitution and bums. You know, I just, I just can't make that finding to say that that's because of the liquor store. The proposed use is compatible with existing surrounding land uses and development? I don't see why not. A liquor store in a professional building. It's, you know, you can't police who goes into businesses. I, you know, I don't think that, that's a nice area up there. If kids are going in there and they're being reckless and their parents aren't catching them, I don't think it's the planning commission's job to police that. So, you know, I, I can make the A. F, you know, it doesn't create an adverse environment of smoke, noise, glare, dust, vibrations. You know, I'm not going to break, I'm not going to blame somebody for the broken glass. I mean, I got a neighbor who throws beer cans out in the street. You know, is that because there's a liquor store three blocks away? I don't think so. It's their personality. I think that with a special use permit, there is greater, greater control. On G, the signage, you know, I think that Reno Direct is the one that should police that, not the, not the planning commission. We're looking at a land use. Either you can make the findings or you can't. And, you know, I don't think that's because of the signage or broken glass or that's not compatible. We're not here to enforce the CCNRs. We're here to enforce land use, in our, in our opinions, on land use. I don't think it's a bad land use project. Reno Direct is the place that you'd have to go, and you have more controls on it. So I can make the findings. I think it's, it's a, it's a good project. It'll be good. I think that the, the owners have had a wake-up call, and they will comply. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Newberg. Commissioner Wusley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too went in this, you know, having feelings on both sides, and it's, I do like the fact that with the special use permit, we could put more controls on, on what goes on with that business. But at the same time, I like the, the spirit of the original one, especially liquor. I believe that's appropriate for that area. I do have an issue possibly with the signage and the notification, but I'm sure we could fill this room with neighbors that are opposed to this, to this business. But would it change our findings? And I'm not sure that it would change mine, just because I'm basing it on, on not only the spirit of the law, but the letter of the law as well. And I am having a problem finding, with some of the findings in that especially A, what's compatible with its existing surroundings. And I don't, I don't believe that making it easier or inviting kids into the liquor store is, is appropriate. You know, it's a liquor store, and even if they are coming in right now, everything that should be done to keep that out if there's nothing in there for them. So I could support denial of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I guess I'm torn between this also. You know, obviously, condition G, what we saw is in violation and, and some of the signage there, which. But again, I think it is a land use special use permit. I guess I'm kind of disappointed it didn't get before the nab or there weren't more feedback, I guess, with the liquor store and the community around there, so. I'd almost like to postpone it to where it could go before the nab.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make my comments and then I'll, I'll. Commissioner Egan, would you like to go first? Do you have any comments you'd like to add to this?
No, I think I'm in agreement with Commissioner Kaufman. I think it seems to me that it would warrant further, you know, if the neighborhood advisory board had, had something to say, it was to be taken into consideration. That's all I'd have to add.
Okay, thank you. I would like to start with, with finding G regarding project signage. We've heard from Claudia, representing staff, that signage is an informants with city ordinance. And at the time it was put up, it's been permitted, it's been checked. What has not is the banners, is the sandwich boards. Those are signs that the city of Reno has control over, that the business owner has neglected to follow ordinance and follow the rules. But their permanent backlit signage is, was permitted and is, appears to be legal. That's what we've been told. So originally, I had G, finding G as, as an issue. We don't, this, we're not looking at whether or not window signage is appropriate. That's not something that we review. Claudia, go ahead. I'm, if I'm misspeaking.
I just want to clarify that. We don't regulate in Title 18. That is something you could condition. You could condition the window signing, but we don't regulate it through Title 18.
Correct. And on window signage, that is something in the, in a special use permit, which I believe is what Commissioner Romeo was getting ready to discuss in more detail, was that we can condition as part of this special use permit, no window signage of any type.
Correct, correct.
Whether it be fluorescent, open, closed, banners, advertising products, whatever.
Right, the lighting. You could have the lighting turned off at a certain time, anything like that. You could.
Right, which, which is what we can do to condition this business to make it more neighborhood friendly.
Correct.
So, you know, I've got to agree with Commissioner Romeo that if we condition this project properly, G may not be an issue. It could be much better for the neighbors and, and everybody. F. I had a problem with that, and Erin, please don't take this personally, but you have discussed certain things that you have seen out there, but we have to go on evidence that is before us. Broken bottles can be around any trash container, anywhere in town. Broken glass can be. Commissioner Romeo, you discussed some vomit that was on the, on the sidewalk. And again, that's a hearsay thing. Unfortunately, we didn't have photographs, and we don't know what the whole situation is. Go ahead, please.
We do know that it has gone to code enforcement for violations, and I would, I would say that's attached to our, our packet also now. And I'm not arguing with you. I'm a proponent of conditioning special use permits to make, make these type of businesses more, more responsive to what we envision and what, what the neighborhood envisions. And that's what the special use permit's for. And that's why I made the comment that the neighbors may be opposing the wrong thing.
Right. We may be able to help make it a better business and a better neighbor by approving and putting more stringent conditions to this SUC.
But I don't think we, as a commission, should be sitting here and writing each condition for a special use permit tonight. Can I, can I just ask a couple? Are the?
To who?
Erin, Erin and Mike, both, both of you. Part, just give, give me a little leeway, okay, just for a second here. Are we at an impasse here? Is there no way that you two will, can get together and work out something with conditions that, that, that the rest of the business owners would accept and the operator of the property would accept to get this into a properly operated, properly regulated and neighborhood-friendly convenience store?
I should just state that I haven't, this is the first time I've ever met Erin, so I haven't had a chance to talk with her.
Erin, this is Mike. Mike, this is Erin.
You know, as far as the signage goes, I know there's a variety of things we can do to, to address the signage issue. I am 100% confident that we can, we can remove a lot of the, the signs. It's in the, signs that are in the windows, that sort of thing. You know, I can't speak to vomit on the sidewalk, and that's right, I can't speak to that.
But if you had a month, could you two get together and?
I absolutely would welcome the opportunity to sit down with Erin.
And you think that's possible? I mean, I've known Mike many years. He's a reasonable person. I trust what he says. You've never met him till today, but I think the rest of us commissioners know he's a fairly honorable.
But we want, but Dennis, let me, I don't want you to open a door that crosses over a line to where we start to get into the civil issue, strictly conditions and ordinances.
Trying to work up to a continuance for a month so the applicant and the interested parties can get together and work out some conditions that we can approve or disapprove.
Perfect, thank you.
I think that when I first approached the podium, I did address the fact that there wasn't a nab and that we didn't have an opportunity to get together and talk about the things that could maybe be done differently. I don't think that any of the owners or any of the neighbors and/or me representing the developer and third-party contracts would be opposed to trying to get together. My concern is who is going to police it when we come up with? They're operating as a, as a convenience store today.
But we have to go, we have to go forward, and, and what I'm trying to do is.
I'm just asking you, who would police that?
Well, if we had a special use permit, you have to understand special use permit has conditions. If those conditions are not met, the special use permit can be revoked.
Can we, can we continue with the?
Yeah.
He's answering a question.
I'm answering the. You have a higher level of enforcement than you do currently, which is calling code enforcement when you have those type of issues. I'm trying to help.
No, I think a continuance is, is definitely a good idea.
Would the, would the applicant agree to that, too?
Yeah, I thought, we would be agreeable, too. We would obviously much rather try to work our issues out than, than battle it out here at the podium. And I think, you know, I can think right off the top of my head, there's several things we can do that I think are at least steps in the positive direction in terms of their concerns.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion from a fellow commissioner for a continuation.
Mr. Chairman, I move to.
Commissioner Romeo?
I'd like to move to continue this item to our February 2nd, 2011 meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Haltem, I second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor of the continuation, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Newberg, his descending vote. Motion still carries with a majority. We will see you next month. With that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item number six, LDC 11-00024, NV Energy Own Place Variances. If the applicant's representative will please come forward and present their project. Do we have any disclosures or recusals? Commissioner Romeo?
I, I do have to make a disclosure. I worked 17 or 18 years for CR Pacific Power Company. No longer work for them. I now work for a water purveyor here in the area. So I think I could be fair and impartial, but if Maryland would like, I would clearly.
No, the disclosure's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other disclosures? Okay. The applicant, please introduce herself. You have 15 minutes.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. I have Mike Pidlicak here with NV Energy to answer any questions. This project's a gated internal parking lot for employees of NV Energy. It's located in a central portion of the NV Energy Own Place campus, which is roughly in the area of Mill, Edison, Amp, Beer, and Om. Own Place has recently been approved for abandonment, and employees have been parking along Om. And now with the abandonment and the incorporation of Om into the campus as a gated area, it'll be used for heavy equipment and transfer of materials. So that parking lot, or parking area will no longer be available. So NV Energy is desirous of establishing a new parking area on the interior of their project site. The parking lot consists of about two and a half acres, and it'll include 137 parking spaces. The entrance will be on Edison, off Edison into here, and it's located in an internal part of the property where it's just not visible, and it's special purpose. It's going to be gated. And it is bordered by heavy equipment yards on the north and south and other industrial uses around it. So we're asking for a variance from the landscape requirements, the typical islands and peripheral landscaping, because it doesn't make sense to put buffer landscaping on either side of the parking lot when NV Energy owns both sides and has heavy equipment there. So NV Energy has reached an agreement with the staff to replace that landscaping along the front where it is visible, right along Edison Way. And staff wanted trees to be spread out all the way along the property, even though the parking lot parcel is a lot smaller. But we've come to an agreement. There'll be a 30-foot landscape buffer put along Edison, and I believe 14 trees. We're in agreement with the staff report and the conditions. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Melissa. Staff, please.
Vern Close, senior planner. The applicant explained the project fairly well. We believe it's reasonable to switch the location of landscaping to where it's going to do more good along the street frontage than on an interior parking lot that's not really accessible to anybody but the employees. So staff can support the request and can make all the findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Okay, at this time, I will open up the public comment portion of this agenda item. Do we have any request to speak for him, Robert?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to come up and speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak for? Hearing and seeing none, closed public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Wusley?
I'd like to propose a motion in case number LDC 11-00024, NV Energy Own Place Variances. Based on the compliance of the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance subject to conditions. And I can agree with all the conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wusley. Do I have a second? Commissioner Egan?
Commissioner Egan, I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda is item number seven, LDC 11-00025, Dollar and Merchandise Smoke and Liquor. Will the applicant's representative please come forward?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself based on the advice of the city attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner Egan. If you would mind having a seat back in our waiting area, we'll call you when this agenda item is done.
Commissioner Egan should explain for the record why he has a con. Commissioner Egan should explain for the record why he has a conflict.
Okay, thank you, Marilyn.
My conflict's based on a couple of things. My wife is a business owner in the Lakeside Crossing Center, and also my father-in-law is a owner in the Lakeside Crossing Center, so...
Thank you. Is the applicant's representative or the applicant here? You will have 15 minutes to describe your project, please.
Thank you very much, my name is Joel Hussein, I, I'm the applicant. I have representative here, she just go, went to the restroom, so I'm waiting for her, just keep her time to here, and she will have, you know, present on front of you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is this her coming in the door right now?
Yeah, she is there.
Okay. If you would, please introduce yourself to us, your clock is ticking.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Clark, and I represent, actually technically represent Akashi, the landlord, therefore I'm representing Dollar Plus Merchandise as a, they would like to have them for their tenant. Dollar Plus Merchandise is applying for a special use permit for a convenience store, and they, they are a good use for this center, and there are, as is, there are other convenience stores in the area, so I suppose they went through this process as well. They are, there's a Goodwill store in the center at this time, there's a Shell station that's a convenience store, there's a 7-Eleven that's about 100 yards from the center, and there's also, Ben's Discount Liquor is across the street from the center, and there's another convenience store down the way, about a mile, Ballpark Market. So, there are other convenience stores in the area, and this, this space was vacant for two-plus years, so bringing this tenant in would, would create tax revenue, revenue for the center, and so, given that, we would like that you grant that special use permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff.
That's a tough one to follow.
Good evening, once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager for Cheryl Ryan. Staff agrees with the applicant's presentation, staff can support the request and can make all the findings. We did receive one call in favor and one call in opposition. One, the opposition, I don't, he didn't mention where he lived in the area or where he owned property. The property owner in favor owns the property where the bank is located on the corner, and those are the calls that we received. I'll be available for questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
All right, with that, I will open public comment. I have a couple of requests to speak forms filled out. Leann Cooper, you're first. You will have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Leann Cooper, and I'm the general...
Can I get you to speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can bend it down, whatever you need to do, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Leann Cooper, and I'm the General Manager of Lakeside Crossing Shell, and I received the staff report, and I had a question on it on page five in the, yeah, okay, on page five, on the area description, it didn't quite meet what is actually there. It says that La Casina is on the east, which is actually on the west, and Moana Market is on the east, if that makes any difference. It does fail to mention here that we're also in that center, which is Lakeside Crossing Shell. We have a convenience store, we have Deli Town USA, plus we own and operate the car wash behind. I, with what Kimberly Clark said, there are a lot of convenience stores in the area, and I don't think that we need to add another one there. A dollar store is one thing, but another convenience store in there to sell alcohol and tobacco, I don't think is needed. We do have the Benz and two other convenience stores within one block of the property, plus Ballpark Market within a half a mile of the property. I don't think we really need another convenience store in there. Thank you so much. Oh, I do have a letter from one of the other property owners, and she was unable to be here, and I have a copy of it, if you wish that, if you would like me to read it.
If you'd like to bring that up, or do you want to read it into the record?
Sure, that'd be great.
You can read it into the record, please?
Okay, that'd be great. Says we won't be able to attend the meeting, but would like...
Could you please address who the, who that's coming from?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, it's from Julie Martenson. She owns Superior Dental Lab Incorporated and Professional Dental Joint Management Associate, LSC, and she won't be able to attend the meeting but would like to provide, provide input for the project. Our business and property is located at 3625 Warren Way, around the corner from the project to be discussed. I understand, and the concern to rent a vacant space but fill that another dollar store and liquor store is not needed in the neighborhood. Within a three-block radius, we already have Ballpark Market, Ben's Liquor, 7-Eleven, Deli Town, and the Smoke Shop on Peckham. As a property owner in the complex, this type of store would require more security, cleanup, and attract clientele not compatible with other store and businesses in the block. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do I need to give her my copy?
Yes, would you please give it to Robert?
Certainly.
Thank you. Next, on the request to speak is Uzal Hussein, and you spoke earlier, would you like three minutes to speak?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. For the record, he is in favor of his project. That is all I have for requests to speak forms. Is there anybody here in the audience who did not fill out a request to speak form that would like to speak on this agendized item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Planning Commission for questions of staff or the applicant. No questions? Okay. A motion? Commissioner Newberg?
Yes, in the case of LDC 11-00025, Dollar and Merchandise Smoke and Liquor, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions. I can make the findings.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Romeo has a second. Do we have any further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, I will ask for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Egan, come on back to the front table. Okay. Next on our agenda is LDC 11-00027, Ranchera PUD Amendment, and at this time, I would like to open up public comment, and anybody who is here who would like to speak under public comment, I will allow you to speak under public comment, and then I would like to entertain a motion for continuation so that the developer, the applicant's representative can go forward with a NAB meeting in the neighborhood and also address some neighbors' concerns before coming before us. So, Robert, do, I will open public comment, do we have any requests to speak forms?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not have any public requests to speak.
Okay. Is there anybody here who would like to come up and speak on this agenda item? I will give you three minutes, please introduce yourself, and then if you would see Robert and fill out a request to speak form, I would appreciate it.
Good evening, my name's Patty Rosenhour, and I'm a property owner on Del Monte Lane, up the road from Ranchera, and I would just like to say that, you know, there's a multi-acre restriction next to Ranchera to the west, and I would think that you would want some kind of a buffer zone where we're not going from office buildings to, you know, some kind of a smaller acreage, shall we say, buffer zone, rather than having, you know, medical offices and everything right next to pastures. There are beautiful pastures, but anyway, that would be my request. Also, Del Monte Lane has several 90-degree turns, so I find it hard to see 6,700 vehicle trips on that two-lane road, and since we can't move Windy Hill to straighten it, you know, but anyway, I just wanted to oppose my, oppose the project, the change in the, in the development.
Okay, thank you very much, and I would like to remind you that the applicant will be at the upcoming NAB meeting, and it would be a great meeting for you to attend where you can have further discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. The NAB, NAB meeting is tomorrow night, that's what I'm being told, is that correct, Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy Dierling with Wood Rogers, representing Middle Fork LLC Ranchera. Yes, we apologize, we are requesting a continuance, we heard some of the same complaints, I think you heard on some of the other items about the timing of the announcements coming out, so in order to be sensitive to that, we'd like to continue this. We'll be at the NAB tomorrow night, the Ward 2 NAB, which is at the Meadowwood Courtyard on South Virginia Street at 6:00 PM, and we'll give a presentation of that, at that meeting.
Thank you, Andy. With that, I will entertain a motion, Commissioner Kaufman, for a continuance.
In the case of LDC 11-00027, I would recommend a continuation to the February 2nd Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kaufman, Commissioner Haltem?
Commissioner Haltem, I think the motion by Douglas Kaufman is a wonderful motion, and I second it.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries unanimously, we will see you all next month. Next on our agenda is item number nine, TXT 11-00006, Assignment and Assumption of Subdivision Extension Agreements. Staff, you're on. Marilyn, even higher up than staff.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I don't think I can follow that. What you have before you is a request to amend the ordinance that allows developers to extend their tentative and final maps by contract as opposed by other provisions in state law. There essentially has already been granted by the City Council an opportunity to extend the extensions agreements, but they were never, the form allowed for an assignment, but the assignment form was never developed. It has now been developed, and we place it before you for that approval, and a couple of amendments to the ordinance to allow that. Now, what you have also here is Exhibit A. We have worked out with staff that Exhibit A will be placed in the city, or city clerk's office, and so will the form for the assignment, so you don't need to approve the extension form, simply the assignment form and the changes to the ordinance, and those, of course, would be recommendations of approval to City Council.
Thank you.
Basically, it's simply allowing the developers to assign their extension agreement if the City Council allows it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for Marilyn? Commissioner Newberg, Commissioner Haltem, I'm sorry.
Marilyn, the question I have, my only concern with the extension of the subdivision agreements we've been doing recently is whether or not we have the ability to add new conditions or subject that development to impact fees or other things if we were to put those things in place. Is there anything in this process here that you're describing that's going to limit our ability to add new conditions when these things come back for, for approval for extension or, or other entitlement requests?
Well, please understand that this has to do only with an alternate system to extend tentative and final maps. There is a system in place under state law that they can be extended for a period of time. In fact, you saw that earlier this morning, or this morning, earlier tonight with, I think it was BL Estates, where you were extending it for a period of time. This has to do with a alternate system, allowing a person to enter into a contract with the city to extend those tentative and final maps if the City Council so chooses. If the City Council chooses to put conditions on that, they could do that because they don't have to allow the contract at all.
In that case, would that mean that the applicant would not have to go before the Planning Commission if that was the decision of the city to pursue this course of action?
I believe that these are being brought to the Planning Commission first, I'd have to stop and think about whether they are or not. Maybe Claudia can answer that, I can't remember. They're not, okay, they're going simply to City Council, for City Council approval, and I think there's only about 10 of them out of all of the developers who have chosen to go this way because it's a relatively rigorous contract that they enter into, but some have found it helpful to them. So, if they go to City Council, City Council can say yes or no. It is an annual request that they have to make in order to do it year by year by year, and there is a seven-year period in total, so they can't just run it forever.
I just want to make sure that when we do see development return to Reno, that we aren't being faced with dozens of grandfathered subdivisions that are dealing with conditions and guidelines that are, you know, now years and years old and don't reflect the current needs of the community at that time, and that we are, you know, burdened by that, so I want to make sure that city staff and, and the Planning Commission and City Council still have the ability to influence these subdivisions appropriately as needed going forward.
Now, there is, and you should understand that in state law, once a tentative map has been approved, then, and, and let's say the developer is choosing to file a series of final maps, then if he's doing a series of final maps, then essentially the city cannot further condition that final, or those, that tentative map, except for health safety reasons. So there is that, but that's already in state law, and, and this doesn't change that at all, so that, that restriction is there. But the real control of this is within the City Council's decision to grant or not grant that extension. That's how they control it, they don't have to grant the extension.
Correct, so if we see a tentative map and we feel like the, because of the passage of time, we feel like additional conditions are required, we should deny that extension and let them come back and apply for a new tentative map to apply a new set of conditions upon it?
That would be one option that you would have available to you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I will entertain a motion.
Everybody's looking at me.
Commissioner Haltem?
In the case of text amendment 11-00006, Assignment and Assumption of Subdivision Extension Agreements, based upon a compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Wusley?
I'll second that, and I can make the findings.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And did that include the form, the assignment form?
Of course it did, that included the assignment form.
Perfect, thank you.
We all voted on it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, with that, I will close public hearings, and before I move on to Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report, we have a young boy scout in the audience this evening. Would you like to come forward to the podium for a second? Vern, would you mind helping him get that microphone down a little bit lower where he could talk to us? I'm not trying to embarrass you, I just would like you to introduce yourself and tell us why you're here tonight.
Hi, I'm Michael Ebeneff from Troop 108, and I came for the merit badge citizenship in the community, and I needed to choose a, what's it called? I needed to choose, I can't remember what, I needed to choose something, and...
A government meeting, maybe?
Yeah, I had to go to a government meeting and take a side and explain to my counselor why I took that side.
Good, well, hopefully you've heard enough tonight that you can pick a side and you get your merit badge. merit badge. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need the chair to sign anything for you?
No? Okay. All right. With that, I will move on on our agenda, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. We did not have a meeting last month. We have one next week. I will see Commissioner Newberg and Commissioner Romeo there with me, I hope. Staff announcements. Claudia.
No new updates. We had back-to-back council meetings, and then with the holidays, no, no updates.
Okay. No announcements, no reports on responses, anything going on we should hear about?
On the train, on a view. Can't remember if any of you got to the, maybe Commissioner Newberg got to the Transportation Summit in December? No? I thought it was...
I got to one that RTC was putting on regarding the bus routes.
Oh, okay, no, this was the Transportation Summit in mid-December. That was a very good presentation, couple-day seminar, very good. And they may be doing it again next year, so I highly recommend it if that comes around again. There's some excellent topics on it.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners suggestions for future agenda items? Motion for adjournment? Accepted.